Did you call a meeting to order? Everybody please rise. Dear God, today's session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessings on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Thank you. We'll now do the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Leahy. Counselor Mercier.
Here.
Counselor Melonazo.
Here.
Counselor Newn.
Here.
Mayor Samaras.
Here.
Counselor Cirillo.
Here.
Counselor Conway.
Here.
Counselor Elliott.
Yeah.
Counselor Kennedy.
Yeah.
That's nine present.
Thank you. Do we have a moment of silence, Counselor Conway?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I request a moment of silence in darkened chambers for Lawrence Begley. Larry Begley died on May 7, 2019, at the Life Care Center in Acton following a long battle with an illness. The day of his passing was the day after his 75th birthday. Larry was born in Lowell on May 6, 1944, to Mildred and Frank Begley. He attended Lowell High School where he met his wife of 52 years, Rita Suppanat Begley, who survives him. At Lowell High, he played varsity baseball and football, where he was a very talented offensive tackle, defensive tackle, and also third baseman. He was a lifelong fan of Boston sports teams and extremely proud fan of the Bruins, Celtics, and especially the Red Sox and the Patriots. He spoke proudly of Lowell, the town where he lived most of his life, and raised his two children who survived him, his son Jerry Begley and his wife Kelly, and his daughter Sherry Begley and her fiancee Mike McQuade. He was a member of the U.S. Bunting Club as well as the employee of a Tuxbury State Hospital. He is survived by his grandchildren, Michelle Silver, Ryan Silver, Dennis Begley, Nicholas Silver, and John Begley. Larry took a stroke back in 1980 and received last rites but proceeded to beat the odds and lived more than 39 years. He lived to enjoy his kids and his grandchildren. He is preceded, predeceased by his brothers, John and Robert Begley, and he is survived by his brother Frank Begley and his wife Diane, and his brothers and sister-in-law Lenny Suppanat and his wife Dottie, Ray Suppanat and his wife Marge Ann Suppanat, Dick Suppanat and Janice Lindblom, and Paul Suppanat and also Janet Bonema, and many nieces and nephews. Larry was also the brother-in-law of the late Leo Suppanat, Ronnie Suppanat, and Bobby and Mary Suppanat, and Lorraine and Ricky Grennan. Larry will be missed by many relatives and friends. May his soul rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Conway, for that. Larry was quite a high school athlete. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Before we begin, if you'll allow me, we have two important announcements to make, rather than save it for the end of the session. The first announcement, in observance of Peace Officers Memorial Day, the Lowell Police Department and police unions will be holding a brief ceremony tomorrow morning, Wednesday, May 15, at 9:30, in front of the JFK Plaza. Peace Officers Memorial Day and Police Week is in observance throughout the country that pays tribute to the local, state, and federal peace officers who have died or have been disabled in the line of duty, so anyone may join the ceremony tomorrow. Also, for tomorrow, Lowell has been selected to receive the 2019 Partner American Small Business Friendly Community Award from the U.S. Conference of Mayors. Reading from the award announcement, Lowell has demonstrated its commitment and support of small businesses by creating a business-friendly environment for business to grow and prosper. Your efforts have helped many new entrepreneurs fulfill their dreams and start a business that helped your existing businesses stay and expand in Lowell. The presentation of the award will take place at E4All in the One Alancet Mill Complex tomorrow morning at 11:00 a.m. for everybody's notice. Okay. Counselor Newn?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to suspend the rule, Mr. Mayor, to have, I just want a second on that.
Second.
Counselor Cirillo?
To have Alex Gonzalez Davidson, an environmental activist from Cambodia. He resigned Cambodia for 12 years. After 12 years, he was exiled by the government. He's now living in Barcelona, Spain. This past weekend, the Cambodian community very honored to have Alex come to Lowell and to give a public forum, update us on what's going on. Although he's no longer in Cambodia, he's still advocate for Cambodian in Cambodia around the issue of environmental, peace, democracies, and so on. I'm very honored if Mr. Mayor allow him a few minutes to share his view with the council tonight.
Thank you. Yes. Please give your name again.
Hello. Oh, that's very loud. Yes, my name is Alex Gonzalez Davidson. I only have a couple of minutes, so I'll be very brief. Cambodia continues to be under a increasingly repressive dictatorship. Honsan is the current dictator. He's been in charge for over 35 years. The situation continues to keep, it keeps getting worse. There's been a severe repression against independent media, opposition party, civil society, and with the influence of China, which is increasing by the day, things are getting worse and worse. And I would like the mayor, if possible, to go to Cambodia, if possible. I believe the former mayor went to Cambodia. That was really, that was really good. It was a sort of pressure.
I bet you Cambodia also.
Yeah, okay. And I think that would be really positive as a way to pressure the Cambodian government and perhaps city councilors too. Cambodia continues to be a beautiful country. And if possible, to lobby congressmen and senators at DC level, so that there's targeted sanctions against members of the dictatorship, because they are, the situation keeps getting worse and worse, not only in terms of environmental destruction, which is my field of expertise, but also in terms of human rights abuses.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
While we're under suspension and seeing the people that we have, the vast number of people here, I'd like to suspend the rules to bring in motion 9.5 out of order.
If you don't mind, here's the thing, at 7 o'clock, we have the two.
Right, with the understanding that at 7 o'clock, because we advertise in the newspaper that we break for the brief public hearing.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second. It's Leahy. All right, we'll go to motion 9.1. Counselor Mercier requests to authorize city manager to hire an expert in construction and procurement methods, including construction, industry labor relations, to conduct and submit to the council a comparative study analyzing the lawfulness, usefulness, and propriety of utilizing a project labor agreement in connection with the Lowell High School project in order that it be accomplished on budget, on schedule, and with reduced operations and maintenance costs. Study should evaluate the adoption of project labor agreement to the extent it might satisfy the underlying goals of the Mass Public Bidding Law, Chapter 149, Section 44A-44H. I need a second.
Yeah! 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 Yeah!
I need a second for the motion, yes.
If there's no objection, it makes sense to me to take 9.2 as well, to do both of them at the same time, if I'm going to take them out of order.
Sure. Do you need a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Counselor Elliott, second the first part.
Could I just comment on something, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just, we should give some information to the audience. I certainly appreciate them here, but there is rules and there's the quorum.
Excuse me, allow me to.
Correct, okay.
Okay. First, let me read the second by Counselor Elliott Conway, which doesn't need a second. Request city council to discuss project labor agreement and to ensure local traders are hired for Lowell High School construction project. All right. I'm just going to ask everyone, I can understand enthusiasm for any situation, but the thing is, I, when I run a meeting, I want it to be properly, I want control of the meeting in the sense of, just quiet your enthusiasm, just lower it down a little bit. The one thing about signs, we're allowing the signs, as long as the signs are not put up in front of other people, to hamper their view of the meeting. So, all I'm stating is, I want to have a good meeting, I want to give everybody their opportunity to speak, and we'll let it go from there.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't need an applause when I say. Last week, I told you that I would vote to support the loan order to pay the cost of designing, constructing, equipping, furnishing, and renovating the Lowell High School project, and I did. I also said that I would support this project with the hope that this project is on time and on budget. That can happen if we follow this motion, utilizing a PLA, a Project Labor Agreement. The purpose of a Project Labor Agreement is developed to provide a timely, cost-effective, and high-quality completion of the project scopes where we have access to the highest quality, trained, licensed, and diverse workforce available. The Songas Arena was built with a PLA. The duration of time for this Lowell High School project is six years. Collective bargaining agreements will expire at some point, some possibly more than once, and a PLA in place ensures that all subcontractors and their employees will go to work on this project without interruptions. This part is for the concerns of my colleague, Councilor Vesna Newn. The city council can establish diversity, and for me and my concern about hiring people in our city, a residency goal as we see fit. For example, 30% Lowell residents, 20% people of color, 15% women, and 15% veterans if we so choose. We can put the numbers the way that we want. I don't see how anybody could object to those having input in what we build in this city. And for my colleague, Councilor John Leahy, who is also concerned about a shift at Lowell High School where students aren't there when certain work needs to be done at a time when students aren't there. These goals can be made into requirements under the terms of a PLA, a Project Labor Agreement. A PLA is a contract between the contractors and the unions which insulates the city from lawsuits challenging these hiring requirements. That's why we need a feasibility study, which would not be that expensive and wouldn't take years or delay the project. Under the terms of the PLA, the union and the employees agree to coordinate with local organizations such as UTEC. We all support UTEC, the Greater Lowell Voc Tech, Job Corps, to create a pathway into local apprenticeships. Previous project labor agreements have all been highly successful, on budget and on schedule. Putting a PLA in place ensures to the skeptics, especially me, and I mean especially me, that the Lowell High School project will be operational at the designated time and will not endure delays. For these and many, many more reasons, I bring this motion forward and hope that professionals do their job. I am in a union. I'm in the New England Police Benevolent Association, 525. I'm not going to kid you, I am a union supporter. My husband was president of local 39 Painters and Allied Trade for 25, excuse me, 21 years. It helped us to buy a home and raise four children. I am very proud and confident that these men and women of their respective building trades will make this facility a first-class, state-of-the-art, a highly envied educational complex that we will all be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. The clerk will please call a name.
Steve Delamas.
To everybody that's, please give your name and your address, and you have five minutes or less.
Okay, thank you. My name's Stephen Delamas. I live at 33 Elmwood Ave, Lowell, Mass. I mean, I don't know what I'd do if it wasn't for the union. I mean, the union has helped me in so many ways. If it wasn't for the new local union hall right on Market Street, I mean, I really don't know what I'd be. I'd probably still be working for cutthroat contractors, you know, being paid below minimum wage. I mean, the union has helped me so much. I mean, I think it's fair that, you know, hey, you get paid an honest wage for an honest day's work. I mean, there's, I'm working in Boston. I live in Lowell. I have to drive about 35 miles away. It costs me over $1,000 a month just to go to work. I live right down the street. This project, it would greatly, greatly help me, it would help my family, and if it wasn't for the union, I probably wouldn't even have the house I have. You know, I went from making $15 an hour to actually being paid what I should be paid. I was making people $10,000, $15,000 a week and being paid $600. I mean, how is that fair? You know, I want to go to work, I want to work in my city. This is where I live. I'm proud to live in Lowell. This is where I'm from. My entire family is from here. I grew up here. You know, I should be able to work around here. I shouldn't have to drive all the way to Boston. I mean, it's bad enough, the amount of taxes I pay, I pay over $600 a week in taxes. Then on top of that, I have to pay another 250 dollars a week to pay for parking, to pay for gas, to pay to fix my vehicle. I literally live right over the bridge, and this would greatly, greatly help the community, and we're all great workers. So, I would really, really greatly appreciate it if I was able, you know, get up in the morning, not have to get up at 4:00 in the morning to drive an hour and a half away, and then have to drive two hours back home. That's four hours a day out of my time, when I live five minutes down the street. You really shouldn't be hiring cutthroat contractors, because they're literally going to pay people $13, $14 an hour, they're going to be making hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. I just don't think it's right that I should have to drive 40, almost 40 miles away, pay $1,000 a month, just, you know, be able to have a job. You know, I'm very thankful to be working for the union. If it wasn't for them, I really don't know what I'd do. They've helped me in more ways than I could ever explain, and I'm very thankful, especially to Mr. Brendan right here. I don't know what I'd do without him. So, thank you. I really hope you take what I say into consideration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thomas Erickson.
Next.
Thomas Erickson.
I'm not Thomas Erickson. I'm not. He lives in Dunstable. I'm a city resident. My name's Jeff Thomas. I'm speaking in behalf of Thomas Erickson, Local Labor's 429. Good evening, Miss Manager, Mr. Mayor, councilors. My name's Jeff Thomas. I've lived on Bowden Street in Lowell for almost all my life, 44 years. I'm here tonight as a resident of Lowell and a member of Local 429, currently the steward at the Courthouse project, and want to support the building trades, which are a part of, in effort, a project for a labor agreement for the Lowell High School project. The city has given out well over $80 million in past, in the past decade in tax credits for Kronos, Mockley, Macon, multiple mill projects, and there's never been any local residents on these projects. The fact that the building trades or any of, any of our unions have had a hand in any of the planning and process of the local residents' hard-working tax dollars, it's unethical and irresponsible. The contractors on these projects pull into Lowell, take our money, drive away with or without spending a dollar in this city, as well as not providing insurance, military hiring, minority hiring, female hiring, no health and safety training whatsoever, no apprentice programs to teach all the younger members in all our unions how to get the job done. The Responsible Ordinance Act in Lowell implemented should be in place again, I believe. Yourself, Mr. Mayor, said on CAP that we don't have to take the lowest bid. The responsible bid we look at is, is the correct one. In closing, we respect the effort you, the mayor, the council, school committee, the residents, for your work to get this done. I only have one question. The mayor, I mean, I apologize, the city manager in 1998 was the mayor. Why can't we have a PLA now? We had it for the Songas Arena, why can't we have it now? Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Harburg.
Excuse me, it's 7 o'clock at this point. Michael, do you mind? We're just going to go, we have two hearings. We have, it's 7 o'clock, and we have to do it at this time. I apologize to everybody, but it's called procedure. The first one is under general public hearing, ordinance to men, Chapter 9, boards, commissioned committee by establishing a monument committee. I believe, Counselor Elliott, are you going to ask for continuance?
Well, I think we have to open the public hearing.
I'm sorry.
I can give a report from the Rules Subcommittee on this.
Allow me to make a motion to open the hearing. The hearing is now open. Counselor Elliott?
Well, people, is there anyone that wants to speak in favor? Is that how we're going to do it? Open it?
I think we're just going to.
Just going to have to open it and just ask.
Continue the, you can, I think, provide your report and we'll continue the matter.
Sure. Okay, so the Rules Subcommittee met this evening to discuss this ordinance as well as another item before us tonight, and there were a number of motions that came out of that Subcommittee meeting, if you'll bear with me. So, at the meeting, myself, Counselor Mercier, and Counselor Melonazo, and a city solicitor. So, there is an ordinance that is advertised this evening to establish a monument committee as a result of a motion that was sent there following discussion of the Roberto Clemente Park issue. So, the, there's a number of items included in the ordinance, including membership. I'm wondering if the people at LTC can fix this, because it's, it's really noisy. So, thank you. The, the ordinance before us has a number of items, including establishing a committee with 11 members, two alternates, and the committee will be created from a variety of disciplines, including urban planning, landscape architecture, historic preservation, historic preservation, and some, and two alternates. So, the motion to delay was as a result of a number of motions that were made. First, we'd like to, the first motion was to include that this membership in this committee will only have, they have to be residents of the city as well. We did ask a solicitor if there are other committees that had residents, non-residents, and I think it was just a dog advisory, maybe some others, but the recommendation from the Subcommittee was to ensure that Lowell residents, considering monuments will be named in the city. The second was to include veterans, a veteran representative as well as a representative selected through the neighborhood organizations, so there's neighborhood representation. So, those are the first two motions. So, the motion was to delay this until the, these changes could be incorporated into, to the new ordinance. So, I don't know if we want to vote. So I don't know if we want to vote on those first, Mr. Mayor, because then there's two other, other housekeeping items that came from it.
Let me check with the clerk here. How do you want to-
I mean, if you, you just provided the rules subcommittee report, I think we accept the report as a report of progress and adopt the motions of the subcommittee at this point.
Okay, that, that's fine. So let me just include, there was one, one last motion. The motion was to get an, one of, one of the challenges to getting membership and expanding boards to include alternates is the, is lack of, I should say, lack of notification, but the fact that residents don't know what board, what openings exist throughout the city. And we have many, many boards and commissions. I want to say there's 18 or so. So the request was to get an update, motion made by Council Mercier, seconded by Council Conway, to get an update on those standing boards and commissions that now exist, and to get an update on the vacancies that are available, and also to publish those vacancies on boards and commissions, because more often than not, I think most of us get, you know, asked, "How can I get involved in the city? I'd like to sit on a board, or I'd like to sit on the commission." And quite frankly, because there's sort of regular turnover, nobody knows what's available and what they're qualified for, or what they're suited for. So that was the second part, to get an update on, and we realized through the solicitor that steps have been taken by the administration to, to update the website and to get information current. So that was the last motion, Mr. Mayor, so the motion would be to accept the report as a, report of progress.
Report of progress and accept the motions. And for a continuance, would you say the 21st or the 28th to continue this hearing?
I, 21, I'd say 21st. I think it's just a matter of making, incorporating those changes or amendments into the ordinance, and they're, they're not substantial.
So we'll continue it till the 21st.
Sure.
Okay, just need a second. And then, Council Mercier, thank you. Next, we have 4.2, ordinance, create one new full-time, grant-funded position titled "Project Manager," establish salary in the Career Center. I'd like to open the hearing for those in favor. Anyone who wants to speak in favor?
My name is Shannon Norton. I live at 137 Lincoln Parkway in Lowell, and I'm the Executive Director of Mass Hire Lowell Career Center. And I'm asking to get this position approved into the ordinance, because we have received a $2.1 million National Health Emergency Grant to combat the opioid crisis. So you might have heard, there was an article in the paper today, is the, the full grant is over $2.4 million, but part of that goes to the state, because the grant actually comes to the state, down to the city. So the project manager position's important, because it's a very complex grant. There's really like two components to it. It's to train people to become peer recovery coaches, to become outreach workers, personal trainers. So there's funds in there to, to provide training and the certification for that. There's $600,000 in subsidized wages to put people into anywhere from $15 an hour, 20-hour a week jobs for up to nine months in these fields, so they can gain experience. And then the hope would be that they go to training to get certified, and then we can place them in those positions in all of the providers around Lowell, because that was indicated as a real need by the providers. And the other part of the grant is to enroll 150 people who have been affected by the crisis, whether directly or one step removed. If you're a parent, or sister, or brother, or friend who has lost your job or become underemployed due to the crisis, there's about $500,000 in occupational training to put people into training, to put them into good jobs, jobs that lead to a career pathway. There's money for supportive services, daycare, uniforms, taking away all the barriers that we can possibly take away, so these people can get put into, into work and into careers. There's several partners that were written into the grant, Lowell House, Megan's House, Life Connection, CTI, the Phoenix, the Sheriff's Office. So this is a really big, complex grant, so this person is going to be responsible for overseeing all of these partners, making sure we're meeting all our guidelines, because the Department of Labor will be checking up on us on this. And I just want to say thank you to the mayor, the city manager, Representative Lori Trahan, our Congresswoman, Rep. Tom Golden, and the Secretary of Labor, Workforce Development, Rosalyn Acosta. They all spoke at our event yesterday. Council Mercier was there. It was a wonderful event. The staff were really pleased at the, the level of support that was shown yesterday, and, and the fact that we got on the front page of the paper with good news is a good thing. So I'm here for any questions. I do have a one-pager. I could leave it with the manager's office, or copies, or with the mayor's office, if you would like a, like a kind of overview of the grant.
No, thank you for your work. That's quite a grant, and we have an opioid task force, and that's going to give you the teeth that you need to help any of the people that are in need. Thank you. Anyone else wants? Anyone else speak in favor? In favor? That portion is closed. Anyone in opposition? 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 That portion is closed. I need a motion to adopt-
So moved.
By Council Cirillo, seconded by Council Conway. Any comments? No. Roll call.
Council Leahy.
Yes.
Council Mercier.
Yes.
Council Melonazo.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaris.
Yes.
Council Cirillo.
Yes.
Council Conway.
Yes.
Council Elliot.
Yes.
Council Kennedy.
Yes.
That's nine yeas.
Thank you. All right, we're back to motion 9.1.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could I, could I just, I just have a question for you and the council. I have several staff members who are here to answer questions, if council have it, on just a couple of motion responses, as well as informational packets. Since this may go quite long, I know some evenings there's no questions for them, so there's, there's only two motion responses, and there's two informational, may they be released if nobody has any questions for them? And I can answer questions.
I don't know if you need a motion, but that's-
Yeah, perhaps. I just didn't want someone to say, "Are they here to answer a question?" I can certainly answer questions when we get to that portion of the agenda.
I'm fine with my motion response. I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Manager. All right. Clerk, please call a roll. Who's, I mean, not call a roll, but next.
Michael Hallberg.
Sorry, Michael.
Good morning, Mayor, City Manager, councilors. I grew up in Lowell, 36 O'Connell Street, pretty much all my life. My father still lives at 36 O'Connell Street, just turned 79 years old on April 30th. He was a union painter, his, his, Council Mercier's husband Ralph was, which I knew very well and was a great guy. I support the project, Project PLA, Project Labor Management, and I've been a union glazer at Local 1044 since 2000. And I think it would be a great thing for the city, for one, because it's going to put 30% of Lowell residents, and the surrounding Lowell residents, not just anybody to come in, and you're going to put women to work, you're going to put a lot of other people to work, and it's going to be a great thing. The thing as far as staying under budget, and, and to have it done on time, when, when you actually say a date, that it's going to be done on that date. And if you needed to do something as far as, as far as, say, the school goes on in the daytime, or we had to work at night, that could be done also, to, to make sure that that project goes on at the right, right budget and the right time. I want everyone to know, everybody that's in here now, that if, if you have a child, or you have a nephew, or you have anybody in your family that's looking to get into a union, right now is the time to get in. Boston's booming, and surrounding towns booming right now. So if you want to get in, and you want your kids to get a good education, and to learn a trade, to literally learn a trade, and make great money, you know what I mean, and support a family, like, like I got to support my family, like my father got to support, like Ralph got to support his four children, this is the opportunity now, because there's a boom right now, not just in Boston. You got, you got, I mean, Appleton Street, you ready to put 20-something buildings up? There's a lot of stuff, not just Lowell High, that, you know, I mean, this could happen. So if you did a PLA, it's going to help all of, all of Lowell, not just, just Lowell, but, gosh, and surrounding towns. And Lowell's the bigger town, then it needs to set the precedence to the other surrounding towns for a PLA. And to get everybody, so that it's a resident thing here, you know what I mean? And you get the skilled workers, skilled trade, and they make a great, great pay. So I think, I think, you know what I mean, if, like I said, if anyone's looking to get their kids in, in to learn a trade, and every single, we're not just, I'm a, I'm a glazer at Local 1044, out of DC 35, which is painters and allied trades, which were tapers, painters, glazers, inside glass guys, you know, and if you know anybody, look, and it's the time. But you got all these other trades, carpenters, I mean, pipe fitters, electricians, plumbers, this is the time to get in, because it's booming right now. And this is why you need to have the skilled people, safety-wise, and that it's going to be done on time. So, that being said, I just hope you, hope you take that into consideration, and you vote yes on the PLA.
Thank you very much.
Nick Graffham.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Nick Graffham. I live on 32 Newell Street in Lowell. Lived there for a little over three years. I'm a union glazer out of Boston Local 1044. I know that Lowell's a community of hard-working people, and they know their value. That's why I chose to buy a house here, make it home, and start a family with my wife and daughter. I'm certain that before I joined the union, none of these milestones in my life would have ever been attainable, not on a non-union income, not without the healthcare benefits that I have access to, and definitely not the safety training and apprenticeship program that we go through. Lowell needs a union workforce behind it. It's too big of a city to undergo any sizable project without one. Lowell wants to build a new high school for our youth, and there's no better way to do it than with the strong, unionized labor behind it. I know that with, when my daughter's time to go to high school, I know that I want the building she's in to be built correctly by skilled tradesmen and women from her own community. Not only will union labor get the job done, it will get the job done right. I want to know that the building is done correctly. Each union worker gets excellent healthcare benefits. These benefits are essential to maintain a healthy life, and are necessary to everybody. As a union member, I have a pension and annuity. It's a retirement plan that allows me to make plans for the future and not worry about it. The Lowell High School Project needs a project labor agreement to ensure the job is done correctly and safely, and to benefit the people of the city. I'm here as a Lowell resident, asking for you to see it from my point of view, as to why this project needs a PLA, and how having a PLA in place has helped me get to where I am today, and could help the people of Lowell. Thank you.
Thank you.
James Caines.
Repeat that name, please.
James Caines. Eric Fertado.
How you doing, Council? I live on 20 Bowelston Street, Lowell. I've been in the union now for about seven years. I've been in construction for about 20 years, and I can just tell you that, being in the union, we practice safety first, and I think it's very important for this Lowell job, that safety is primarily everyone's first interest. And being on the other end, we didn't do safety, we didn't practice it too well. I've seen fingers lost. I've seen a lot of real bad harm done. So I think this would be great for the union.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Evan Shatunoff.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Evan Shatunoff. My address is 20 Friedle Lane, Lowell, Mass. I've been a resident of Lowell for 30 years. My parents grew up in Lowell. My grandparents grew up in Lowell. This would mean a lot to me, for us to sign this PLA. I went to Greater Lowell Tech. I took HVAC. Now I'm a union pipe fitter for Local 537. I just, I think this would be a great opportunity for the union to, to get on this high school project, and I think it would be great for the residents. I would like to give back to this, to this city, so that's, that's, that's all I have, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Seven Arif Hock.
My name is Vaughn Hock. I live in the city of Lowell at 39 Murders Street here in Centerville. And I just want to say I strongly support the PLA. Before the union, I was a dishwasher. I made $10 an hour. It was hard to, to survive on that. As of right now, I just recently graduated a five-year apprenticeship program. I'm a journeyman now, and I, I make a good living, an honest living, and Local 537 has provided me with that. I just wanted to strongly encourage the city council of Lowell to vote in supporting a project labor agreement in Lowell, Lowell High School Project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt Ma.
I'm Matt Ma. I'm a lifelong resident of Centerville, executive officer of Local Three Bricklayers, and I strongly support the PLA. PLA, it's, it's a living document. It's not something that we push on you and nothing can be changed about it. It's talked about between the city, the contractors, subcontractors, the unions. It's a good thing, it, you know, and it's, it's, it doesn't push out non-union competition, doesn't. They, they can, they can jump in as well, but whatever you guys and the contractors and the unions work on, they have to abide by, and they don't want to do that most of the time, because there's, there's health insurance, there's, you know, pension funds, or some, some, some sort of retirement plan set up, or a training, you know, apprenticeship program. They don't want to do that. I worked non-union for six years, and it was the worst six years of my life. I've been in the bricklayers for 11 years now. I've worked my way up. It's given me, it's given me a chance to do something else with my life than just be a bricklayer. I'm executive officer. I want to move up, be a field representative, vice president someday. You know, it gives me options. The union does that. It's, it's a good thing. Like, there's, I can't say anything everybody else hasn't said already. I mean, she, she hit the nail on the head with everything she said, you know? Just take it into consideration, and don't overlook this, because it's a good thing for the city, good thing for the residents. And another thing, we touched on opioid abuse. I don't think there's a local in here that doesn't have some sort of thing set up to help opiate abuse, any kind of substance abuse. Non-union companies don't have that at all, because they don't care. So just take it into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Demetrius Vangos. I will be taking over for Ivan tonight. I am part of Local Three Bricklayers. I grew up in Lowell all my entire life. I went to Greater Lowell Tech to take masonry. I was working non-union through high school and after high school, and I was getting underpaid and not getting any health benefits, any benefits at all. Being part of the union has helped me grow. I'm an apprentice right now. I'll be going on to my second year, and every Wednesday night I have to go to class to continue my training. To get into the union, I went through eight weeks of schooling, even though I went to high school to do this. I think the PLA is going to be great for Lowell, and to get our residents from Lowell to work in Lowell instead of working two hours away, three hours away even. Just would like for everyone to take in consideration that the locals for the union are going to do what they're supposed to do on time, and do it the right way, and make sure that there's nothing that's going to go wrong. Thank you.
Demetrius Vangos.
Yeah, that was me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right. Jeff Thomas.
I already spoke.
Okay, all right. Jim Everett.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's James Everett. I reside at 163 Dahmer Street in Lowell, Mass. I'm a member of the Roofers and Waterproofers Union, Local 33. I'm a foreman and a teacher, an instructor. I currently- I currently have more than two hundred students in my program. This project will create amazing opportunities for them as well as all of our trades, men and women, in the surrounding communities. I wish to speak in favor of the project, the Lowell High School project, and doing it under a project labor agreement. Please vote and conduct a feasibility study for the PLA. Thank you.
Oscar Cortez.
Hello, everybody. My name's Oscar Cortez. I live in the city of Lowell on four oh seven High Street. I've been around Lowell, living in Lowell around twenty years. I got my daughters over here, my family, ankles, I know a lot of people, friends. I love this city. I, I'm a mechanical insulator, working for Local Six, pipe covers. Before, I used to work for a shop, a private shop, and I never had the opportunity like the union gave it to me and changed my life for good. So, I'm here today to support the PLA and ask you the city, the Lowell, the Lowell councils, please vote. I encourage today you to please support us because union is the best for the families. We have better benefits, better skills, and better opportunities. Thanks for the time.
Thank you. Carlos Restrepo.
Good evening. I'm here to represent the all brothers and sisters of the union. Sorry, I live at eighty-eight Lane Street in Lowell. I've been in Lowell for the last thirty-four years. I raised my two kids in Lowell, and now my grandkids. I got two grandkids, and Lowell's a great city, and I'm so happy and excited to be part of this project, and I support the PLA because Lowell is based in our history, and I can tell later days my grandkids, I built this project. Lowell is about good things and is allowed to know about Lowell. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. David Richmond.
Hi, my name's Dave Richmond. I live on one sixty-nine Fairmount Street in Lowell. I'm here to show my support for the project labor agreement. I got here fourteen years ago. I was squatting in a warehouse in Lawrence. I was working for a bookstore that had the warehouse, so ten of my hours would go to live in that space. Fourteen years ago, I got a union job. Ten, ten, uh, four years ago, I bought the house in one sixty-nine Fairmount Street. I wanted to mention especially how decent construction workers are. If you, if you don't work on a job site, you just don't know, you know? I have a good opportunity to work with union and non-union. I'm a controlled contractor, so sometimes the electrical will go non-union and the controls will go union. And when you're on those jobs, there's just a different atmosphere. You can't borrow a dust mask, you can't borrow, everything is pennies. You can't borrow what you need to get by in the day. When you're on a union job, everybody really is looking out for each other, and I, you know, because they've done so much for me, I felt obligated to come and say that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. John Drinkwater.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Manager, members of the council. My name is John Drinkwater. I live at two thirty-two Remington Street, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak for a few minutes on this motion tonight. I want to say as a member of this community, I was incredibly proud and excited at the investment made in future generations of Lowell at last week's meeting with the investment in the new high school. I think it'll create incredible opportunities, not only for my three young children who are in Lowell schools or entering Lowell schools, but, but generations of future children, and that's very exciting. And those opportunities, they don't have to stop with the students who walk through the doors of that new and modern Lowell High School. There are going to be thousands and thousands of hours of construction work, building that new Lowell High School, and which each, each one of those construction hours is an opportunity because there's a big difference between a job and construction and an actual career in a unionized construction industry. And as others have stated here tonight, a project labor agreement does not ensure that any particular union is going to work on that project or any particular man or woman in this room is going to work on that project, but allows this body to set standards of the work that's going to be performed on that project. And the reason that so many of my brothers and sisters here in this room tonight are out here supporting this motion and supporting the concept of, of a project labor agreement is that they know if we set the highest possible standards in terms of safety, in terms of training, meaning affiliation with a bona fide apprenticeship program, in terms of diversity in the workforce, they can compete with absolutely anybody, and they can compete better than anybody with the highest possible standards in place. And that's why they're out here supporting this project, not because it guarantees them work, because that they know that they and their union contractors can compete with any standard put out there. I think it's an opportunity for this body to put forward a set of values. Councilor Mercier in her remarks referred to setting goals for local hiring, for the hiring of veterans, the hiring of women, you know, setting goals for diversity hiring on this project. I think if we look to the city of Boston, where so many people are commuting to because of the, the development boom and the opportunity to work there, with the number of hours on construction projects there, they've been able to do incredible things in terms of pre-apprenticeship training, going out into communities and reaching out to people who may not have ever thought about a career in a unionized building trade, and actually recruiting them and getting them the, their early skills to actually prepare them to apply to a union apprenticeship program. This project is an incredible opportunity to, to actually create models based on what's happening in places like Boston to actually put local people on jobs and actually create opportunities that are going to lead to not just a job on a construction project, but a, a career that is a winning lottery ticket. It's a career that means living wages, it means health benefits, it means pensions and annuities throughout the course of a career, not just on one job. So, I urge the members of this body to vote in favor of the motion on the feasibility study. I think this will create an opportunity to continue the conversation on the project labor agreement. There'll be plenty of time to discuss what this means for cost, what this means for, you know, project being on time and on budget, and I think a feasibility study can contribute a lot to that conversation. But I do urge this council to think about what kind of values we want to put forth other than providing a great modern facility for our students. What kind of values do we want to put forward about who's going to go to work on this project and the, the other kinds of opportunities it can create for members of this community? I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and appreciate your consideration.
Chris Brennan.
Thank you. I'm here to speak on behalf of a project labor agreement for Lowell High School. My name is Chris Brennan, and I'm the president of the Merrimack Valley Building Trades, representing one thousand members and their families in, in the city of Lowell. I'm here on behalf of them to encourage the city council to support the motion. The city council is to conduct a feasibility study on, on the value of a project labor agreement on this project. A carefully crafted PLA creates strict enforceable guidelines dictating things such as responsible contractor language, work hours, pre-construction conferences, and monthly compliance meetings. In addition to that, it also provides strong language providing Lowell residents, women, people of color, veterans, to get preference and opportunity to be able to work on this project, as well as the creation of pipelines with places like Greater Lowell Tech, Lowell High, and nonprofits such as organizations like UTEC, quite frankly, pipelines that already exist within the building trades. These are opportunities that will lead to long careers, a livable wage, and family-sustaining benefits for Lowellaleans long after this project is done, as they fall into circulation into their respective locals. As this process plays out, you're going to hear things from solicitors, from architects, quoting places like the notoriously anti-labor Beacon Hill Institute, over about ten to fifteen percent over budget without any hard data to back up these claims. The fact is, I'm holding in my hand no less than a dozen PLA examples coming in on time and on the budget, including your very own Songas Arena. Tonight, this body has an opportunity to leave their mark on this project, control the process that will benefit Lowellaleans. I strongly urge you to reject any amendments to this original motion and leave this decision in your hands. The PLA to be used. Please vote in favor of Councilor Mercier's motion to order a feasibility study that'll ultimately lead to a project labor agreement on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. That ends the speaking part of the program. I want to thank all the speakers for their following the rules and, you know, speaking appropriately. Thank you very much. Got a lot of information. Madam Manager, is there any issues that we should be aware of at this particular point?
Well, there's a second motion.
Yes.
Could we have a roll call on that motion?
Second, yes, Councilor Elliott?
Well, we took both the motions up, so can I?
Yes.
Can I speak on my motion? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the speakers and everyone that came down tonight. I filed a, somewhat of a similar motion to Councilor Mercier. And I filed the motion to ensure, and the signs here, that local trades are represented, they're hired for this particular project. The magnitude of the Lowell High School project, it's, it's the largest in the city's history, quite frankly, the largest in the state, and this project will certainly be under the, the microscope of the SBA and, and its success. I want to ensure that it's built professionally, with skilled labor, with union members, and I want to ensure that local tradespeople are hired right here from the city of Lowell to surrounding jobs. This is city of Lowell, taxpayer money, and we should be hiring people right here in the city of Lowell. So, yeah. It's a complex project. We've been going through it for years, and as a member of the school building committee, I understand the complexity. And we need professionals to do the work correctly. We need it to be done cost-effectively and on time. The, the timing of the construction will be imperative. We have to make sure the environment is safe while school is being conducted for the students. You know, we just supported the National Grid striking workforce, striking workers for months and months, and I stood tall, and I would do it again in a heartbeat, against corporate greed for unqualified workers who made mistakes, and we can't compromise safety or quality of work on this Lowell High School project. So, you know, we're getting toward in fourteen million from the state, but the city of Lowell taxpayers are footing the bill as well in millions. So, again, we've got to make sure it's done right with quality workmanship. The building has to last decades, so let's do it right. Let's hire local trades, let's hi, make sure their residents, their taxpayers, let's put an agreement in place to create opportunities for tradespeople and, as the signs say, local jobs for local people. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Conway then, Mr. Malonazza. Mr. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I also want to thank the speakers for coming down here tonight. I, I'm actually been a very proud union member for over thirty-seven years with the teachers' union. I do believe that hiring from our local union talent pool signals to Lowell residents and voters that these skilled workers are truly part of the city and they have a stake in Lowell's future. Some of these local workers, I think we'll find, actually went to Lowell High School. They went through our school system. They got their foundation here in Lowell. Who better to work on this project? It's not just another job, it's the pride of this school and this city. Hiring local workers will help lower the area's unemployment rate. Also, it helps to ensure keeping money in the city and circulating the dollars with our different businesses instead of spending the money outside the city. It will enhance our economic development and attract other businesses to our city. Hiring Lowellaleans and local union workers for this project just makes sense.
Pastor Malonazza?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank all of the speakers for coming down this evening. And again, it's obviously a very important project, and I think that we should, obviously, in my opinion, hire local people from Lowell and the Greater Lowell area, have a apprenticeship program, a training program, safety-first program. I'll put my record as executive director of a couple of housing authorities up against anybody when it comes to working and supporting union workers, but I do think that even though we have this crowd here, I'd like to move that this be, both motions be referred back to the city manager because I do think we need more information. Again, I'm hearing things that the feasibility study is going to cost X amount of dollars. I don't know where that's going to come from. I do think that we can set up quotas based upon agreements with the construction management company as well as the general contractor. I mean, I hope the whole thing goes union. I really hope the whole thing goes union because I think it's, as someone mentioned, I think it was John Drinkwater, that you're not only creating jobs, but you're creating careers for people. But again, if you hear some of the information that I've been able to get really just online over the last few days, this could add, I know you may boo, but this could add ten to fifteen percent to the, to the cost. So, we're looking at forty, forty million dollars on top of the cost, and the MSBA does not participate in PLA agreements. So, we, as the financial oversight committee in this city, needs, needs to find out, number one, if that's true, because I don't know if it's true, and number two, if it is true, we have to redesign the high school if we're going to go forward with the PLA. And if we're going to redesign the high school and identify forty million dollars with the cost that we need to take out in order to support the PLA, you know, that's an issue for me. I think we can accomplish everything that we've talked about tonight, and I think, you know, to Councilor Mercier, Councilor Elliott, and Councilor Conway, I respect their position bringing this forward because I think it's very important to put Lowell people to work, to train them, and to make sure they're safe on the job site. Again, they got correct, there was a PLA at the, at the Songas Center. There was not a PLA at the courthouse. And, and again, I don't know how much of the...
Four months behind.
We're not supposed to go with the cheapest price. I work for Lowell.
No. Excuse me.
Anyway, I'm going to put that in the form of a motion to get more information in a timely manner, if we can get information back from the city manager next week, and I fully expect if it does pass that you'll meet with our consultants, our project team that's been working on this, to, to give us the information that I'd be comfortable in supporting the, in supporting the PLA. So, I'm going to put that in the form of a motion.
Is there a second motion?
I second it, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor? No. Roll call. Hold, hold. Roll call. Just, that's, we've, we've had, we've had a good meeting. I'm willing to, if people want to speak, I'm actually willing to let somebody come up. I don't want people yelling out from the crowd, I'd rather have somebody come to the microphone to speak appropriately. But a motion was made, a second, second motion was made and was seconded. Madam Manager?
Thank you. Just briefly, and we did, in, in response, I have been meeting with the consultants, of course. This matter was brought up last week, and I have met with all of our consultants practically every day on this issue. I did provide you just a brief summary of some of the facts on your desk, and it is important, I think, and we certainly can give you a more full report on both motions in terms of what... in terms of what this means, where we are at in the process with the MSBA, and where we would be in the process in terms of costs and feasibility, and whether that would change anything. And I think those are the important things to consider. The consultants, as I've said, and I said when I met with union members, have this project, when we designed this with the MSBA, with our consultants, with the architects, with the construction manager, who has done exactly what the motion is asking and has costed everything, and that we've paid them quite a lot of money. It was not included in this for PLA costs. That is because, actually, to date, none of the schools built through the MSBA since 2004 have had a PLA on those projects. That is because this council had instructed our consultants to make the best project for the lowest price. And in the, our consultants, as you recall, cost estimators were used in this process, not just under the schematic design, but the costs. Those were done by Skanska, our project manager, who is also a very large construction company. They did cost estimating, as did an independent cost estimator, as did the MSBA. I am told, and this is what we pay consultants for, a PLA would add 10 to 15% cost to this project. The studies that, there are other studies that also support that, if not more, but the real issue is, that's the project we have. That's the project that the MSBA voted on. That's the project that this council voted on in terms of the cost, 343 million. There is no extra money for PLA. So, what would have to happen? We'll give you the full report on this. The added cost, it is not on the full 343 million, it's on 270 million and change because that's the construction cost. And so, the 10 to 15% on the 27 million equals 27 to 40 million dollars. The consultants have indicated that the city would have two choices, and it is up to the city if the city wanted to put a PLA on this project. The city could either increase the bond, increase the cities, because the MSBA will absolutely not participate in PLA costs. So, the extra monies, 27 to 40 million, would be 100% on the city's side of this project and this budget. Alternatively, if the council did not want to increase the costs, the council would then have to seek relief from the MSBA to go back to redesign the project. In other words, re-value engineer, whatever you want to call it, take that money out of the project, the 40 million, because our contract with our consultants and our architects is to design the project to the budget that's been approved, approved by the MSBA and approved by this council. And the architects can't do that if there's a $40 million cost added. So, either we'd have to come up with the money, or we would have to value engineer, and we'd have to go back to the MSBA because taking the money out would also affect the MSBA's support of the project because it's based on the overall project. So, all the numbers would change. We would be back asking them for another go at the schematic design, and that would be considerable time to go back to that. And so, those are some facts that I've been able to ascertain over this past week, meeting with the consultants, and of course, germane to this council. As to a feasibility study, again, the cost anywhere from 100,000 on up, depending on how extensive, and it would be, based on the language, it could take a long time, but we don't have any budget for that in terms of the city to pay for that feasibility study. Moreover, this project has already been approved as is, and so, and our consultants have already been hired and have given opinion, including the independent cost estimator who has said it would be 10 to 15%. Let me just mention two other, a couple of other points. I've included in here what delay, if it was a six-month delay, if it was a longer delay, what that would add to the project, which is considerable. So, we do know that delay can't happen on this project. That is a big concern. We need the high school as soon as possible. I think the most important thing to understand is that we all want quality project. We all want people working on it from Lowell, and we can have local labor language, and we can work with both the construction manager, with the unions, about that local labor manage in preference, including minorities, including women, so that's not dependent on a PLA. The other thing that I think is important to note, and I'm not sure, and this is something that, when the case, when the project was costed out by all the cost estimators, the five companies that are finalists to bid on this project, at the time our consultants were looking and trying to cost out this project, they understood that because of the size of the project, there were only certain companies that have the capability of building this because, to have the capability to bond the project. All five of those companies have what are called signatories with two large unions and their sub-unions, and those are the carpenters and the laborers. That will make up at least 50, if not more, percent of this project out of the box. Please, excuse me. Mr. Mayor, I didn't object to anything being said. I'm explaining to the council, to the listeners, to the audience, to the people at home, what our consultants, who we've paid a lot of money, have explained to me. So, and the other thing is what they've indicated, we will put this in a report, because of the size and scope of this project, it's likely, very likely, based on their experience, to be majority union on this project, and we want the highest quality. So, this is, this is something that we can put in, as I said, I provided the council with a summary of what information I've been supplied by our consultants, but make no mistake, we do have an agreement with the MSBA. When they voted on it and we voted on it, that's to the project, to the scope of the project, meaning all the aspects that went into the design of this project and the budget. And so, you know, I will come back with that information, but the information as far as what it would add is also part of the project because that is the number that the independent cost estimator and others have put on this. So, but we can get more detail, and also particularly in and around the issues of local labor language. We've looked at language in Boston, I think that was mentioned here, and we're looking at those as well.
Councilor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Day one in 2018, when I came on, I've been a strong advocate for diversity in the workforce, particularly in City Lowell, City Hall, Police and Fire Department. I've been working closely with the managers, do language with the HR, as well as the police and the fire department, and that's what I wanted. That's what I wanted. I want diversity in the workforce. I want women and resident. I've been saying that from day one, and this project's gonna have to have that as well. And so, you know, to refer this to the managers, to look at it, and to see if there's possibilities for those money to hide, to do a feasibility study. If, where's that money come from? How much it gonna cost? How much time that's going to delay? All those we need to factor into our decision when the report come back. That's why I support, I second Councilor Millenazza's motion.
Councilor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I just heard the city manager say a six-month delay if there's a feasibility study. Wouldn't the project be starting in 2021? I think we get plenty of time for a feasibility study if it's 2021. Secondly, we talk about PLA, and the courthouse judicial center didn't have one. That's a state project. Lowell High School is a city project. That's the difference to me right there. And if you say that you spoke to the consultants, I wish you would have brought them here so we could have heard from them directly, because I didn't hear from them at all. I don't know where they are. And I'm not in favor of passing this off for you to probably put in a draw somewhere because if we vote on it, I'm voting no. Because I think that I looked up your record, and it seems to me that you weren't favorable of a union, so I don't know if you're bringing your personal feelings with it.
Mr. Mayor, may I respond?
Yes.
So, Councilor, I don't know what you're talking about, but let me be clear. When it comes to PLAs, I was asked about a PLA about, back when I was running for office, and I said it would depend on if there's added cost. That's what I said then, that's what I'm saying now. And the costs are there. Decam, the state project, you are correct. They do not use PLAs in Decam projects. I actually spoke with the commissioner yesterday because it adds cost according to Decam, and they will not justify using taxpayer dollars to add cost to a public construction contract. So, that's what, you know, the status is there. This is a public construction contract as well.
Let me remind everybody, let's not make it personal. Let's deal with the issues.
I would ask that, as a city councilor, that you work for me, that you have a consultant here that can tell me, this council directly, because I think that, and I have the right to question anybody in this room that came up to that podium, and I would like to ask Chris Brennan if he would stand up there and say, is, how mu, do they use PLAs in other cities and towns because, and what about the cost? Is it as high as?
It's not as high. Mr. Mayor, if I may, the manager referenced that there was, there hasn't been a PLA done under the MSBA since 2004. And yet, she has numbers saying that it's going to cost 10 to 15% more with a project labor agreement. Where is the precedent? She just said in the same quote that there is, that it's never been done, yet now all of a sudden we have 10 to 15% higher. How is that possible? That's the question I would have for the manager.
Mr. Mayor, this is why we will give you the report. PLAs have been used in other states. And again, you want to shoot the messenger. I'm just telling you and the council what our consultants have said.
Hold up. Look, this has been a good meeting. I don't want, if everybody starts yelling out, we'll end it. I've allowed him to, I've allowed, I'm gonna allow speakers to come up if requested so we can have a logical conversation. However, I'm gonna say one thing. I was, I got through college being a union laborer. I appreciate what it is. But my issue right now is the building of Lowell High School on time and correctly. And the one thing I don't want to do is see anything come in its way. If the feasibility study would be to a point where it's going to delay the project and it's gonna cost the taxpayers money, I have concerns. You've raised concerns, the city managers raised concerns. I will favor returning this to the city manager so she can bring us the information. I don't want to argue the information on the floor. I want to be able to say, if you have a question, let's get an answer to the question. If the answer, if you have a different answer, why do we have different answers? I want us to work together. It's for the common good. I have spoken to the manager many times, and we've talked about a local labor preference. I mean, that's very important to me. I mean, when I first got onto the city council, I spoke on behalf of those type of issues to ensure local people, or people in Lowell, get preference to these jobs. I've been a union person all my life. But what's more important to me at this particular point is Lowell High School, building it on time, not being followed up with the MSBA, because the MSBA, its rules are so different now, and the city manager has stated correctly. If we change it, we have two options. Cut the building down, it's not gonna happen under my watch, or add how much to the taxpayers. We have to know. We have to have an answer. You have an opinion? No, I just want that information to come forward.
If I can just say a couple of things in closing?
Sure.
I would like to...
You understand where I'm coming from?
Yeah, I do. I appreciate it. And listen, I appreciate this debate. This is what this country's built on. You know, we talked about the numbers that we're coming from when we haven't had the, there's never been a study done. There's, I'm sorry, the project has never been done like this. So, how do we have those numbers? When we, when you talked about the information that you gave to the counselors or something, or you gave something out, or you were talking about, and when I spoke earlier, I asked about, I talked about the notoriously anti-union Beacon Hill Institute. Is that institute quoted in this study? And if so, you need to take a look at that because those institutions like that are notoriously anti-labor. And Governor Baker, under Governor Baker, has refused, ideologically refused, to do project labor agreements as a governor, playing to his base. Now, we don't have to get into Democrat and Republican, I think we all understand that, but that, she's correct when she says Decam doesn't do them. They do not do them under the direction of Governor Charlie Baker. Under Governor Deval Patrick, I have a handful here that were done, and governors previous to him, that were done on time and on the budget. So, just so that we have an even playing field here, I believe that the manager's information is, I believe that the manager has been misinformed or ill-informed by institutions with sinister means.
You've brought up, you know, information, okay? The thing is, what I'd like to see is, I trust the city manager, and I'd like the information to go back to the city manager, allow her, because I know she's worked with, she's been working with union people also on this, and I'd like to have some discussions, or it's her choice how it happens or what happens. But the thing is, I'll go back to where I stand. I don't want anything to get in the way of this high school. So, the thing is, I don't want to react to a group and say, I'll do this, then find out...
I don't expect it to, Mayor.
You know, but you understand, and find out a few months later, we're in a hole somewhere.
I do.
I want reasonable information.
And I understand that. Having met with the manager, I'm convinced which way she wants to go. That's my opinion. I could be wrong. I hope not, but, you know, in the end, in six years from now, I'm sorry, eight years from now, seven years from now, 2026, if this thing doesn't come in on time and on the budget, right, who's gonna be held to account? We're gonna have to remember this meeting and what was said, and people should be held to account in this, and the numbers that they're pushing out there, and the rhetoric that they're pushing out there. People need to be held to account. Are they still gonna be around?
No.
I hope so. You know, we'll see, you know?
We all, let's put it this way, we all do. But the issue is, you're correct. We will be held accountable, and the thing is, at this point, I want to do it right. Madam Manager?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to, again, add, this isn't my opinion. All I am doing is conveying to this council what our consultants had said. It's up to the council, okay? But it's not an opinion. These are what the professionals who we hired on this project are informing. So, that's why I'm happy to do a more in-depth report based on what our consultants, who we have paid quite a lot of money to give us advice on this project.
Okay. Mr. Millenazza then, Councilor Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I certainly respect Chris Brennan's opinion, but I do want to say for the record, I think Governor Baker's been very good to this community since he's been in office. Forget the PLA agreement, but I do think if you look around at the economic development, I mean, the courthouse for one, all of the public infrastructure improvements that are gonna take place. My question has to do with getting the report back to us in a timely fashion, and whether it makes sense, and I'm not looking to tell the manager how to do her job, but does it make sense for you and Chris Brennan and whoever Chris wants to bring to a meeting to sit down with you and our consultants in a room and have Chris Brennan and his team listen to what our consultants are telling you firsthand? You know, again, I'm just trying to be fair and open up the lines of communication.
I mean, we have met, and I've shared, as I told you when we met, I shared...
Was anybody from Skanska there or Perkins Eastman?
No, we will, and we will get the report and certainly make it available to the council or whoever else is here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, okay. Councilor Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I think everybody on the city council is interested and would very much like to have this project be done with local labor, with union labor. I think everybody on this council would be in favor of having as much diversity as possible, or have that labor be comprised of as much diversity as possible. And I think everybody on the city council likes the apprenticeship idea as well. Those are all great ideas, and I think that there is strong support on this council to do those things. And I think that there is strong support on this council to do those things. But for those of us who have been on this council since the beginning of the high school project, for the duration and how long it took just to decide upon a location, the idea of, of going back to the MSBA is just not an acceptable idea. The idea of delaying a project or making it cost more money or doing anything that's going to increase the cost, because the, the cost is an issue for a lot of people, is something that isn't acceptable. But I do think, and, and the city manager did meet with, with, with Chris and, and several members of the, of the Building Trades yesterday. And part of that discussion was over the, the cost and whether or not the cost would be increased. And there's a discrepancy there. And so we have cost estimators that are telling us or telling the city that it's going to be 10 to 15% more. But the representatives of the Building Trades are saying, no, it should not be anymore. And that's something that we have time to reconcile, to find out whether or not that is true or, or which way it goes or how much it would be if it's going to be anything at all. And I, I think that the manager and through the discussion that, that, that took place yesterday between the city manager and the Building Trades, that that was an issue that, that will be addressed. And so we'll ask the cost estimators, just why is it that it would be more? And, and so that's something that can be ironed out. And I also think that, that some of the language in the, in the PLA, if we don't end up with a PLA or a hybrid of the PLA, then at least we can develop policies or, or covenants or, or something like that that would be, that would ensure that we have as many, as much union workmanship on this project as possible. And I think that that's really what we should be striving for here. And, and I think we have time to do that. And, and that's, that's why I think the Counsel Malinazzo's motion is a good idea. It is, it's the smart motion and the smart way to go. And I think it's, it's, it's worthwhile and I think it will be fruitful if the city manager continues to have discussions with the Building Trades over this project. And let's just see how much we can do in terms of providing as much local labor, union labor, as, as we can on this project and, and what we can do is in terms of diversity and, and the apprenticeship. Those, those are great ideas. And if we can incorporate them into this project, I think that, that everybody wins on that. But I think for tonight, we shouldn't have it be that everything is black or, or white. We should be looking at what, what is gray and just how gray can it be? And, and so that's why I'm happy to support Counsel Malinazzo's motion and hope that the discussions are, go on and that, and prove to be fruitful. Thank you.
No, thank you for that. I mean, the thing is, Senator, actually, Counsel Kennedy put everything together the way I, I'd like it to be expressed. You have to understand, some of us put more of an effort into this high school. The idea, the idea of the high school's been very important to me. I was the headmaster, there's certain things I want to see. And I've been part of so many projects over the years because of cost overruns. At the end, they just chopped the school to pieces. We can't afford to do that. And then there are other issues, as you stated, who's going to take responsibility for what happens at the end? So I think right now, the whole idea is correct to have the proper dialogue and really an exchange between you and the city manager. Hopefully, city manager, you'd meet with the city manager again to discuss the issue of, you know, what would be the cost of a PLA? I mean, can we do it or can some arrangements be made to ensure that we build the right type of high school with the costs, with the money that we have? It just requires some dialogue. Your people represented themselves very well today. They spoke with their hearts and we had, and we listened. Every one of us support this high school, we support the unions. But the thing is, at the same time, we have to support the taxpayers. We made a promise to the taxpayers to ensure that we treat them well and we, and we monitor all costs. That's one thing, you know, doing that. But the next is to build the high school and build it on time. So the thing is, I, I think we need some more dialogue and I too will vote to support bringing this back to the city manager, having more dialogue and hopefully coming to some agreement.
I, I understand that we have more time, Mr. Mayor. I, I wholeheartedly-
This is a short period of time, you know, in other words, it could be done.
I wholeheartedly agree with you. You know, there's just a lot of holes in some of the things that, that the manager has produced and we really need to address them.
But it's both, but it's true in both ways, you know that.
And she's, and she's making her points and, and I think this has been a cordial, you know, speak. And you mentioned, you mentioned my-
And that, and I don't interrupt, but that's what it has to be, in other words.
And I feel like it has. I, I, I think the ma, the manager should feel that. We had a spirited debate yesterday. It, it, it was very cordial, you know? I just think that, you know, the, the numbers just don't add up. I can't stress that enough. This is a prevailing wage job. That's how it's gone, okay? The union rate is the prevailing wage. So there's no cost difference unless, unless when it was bought out, that they were, the, the, the general contractor or the owner, or the owner of Skanska was, was banking on getting real, real low non-union numbers. The cost is the cost. Our cost is the prevailing wage. This job has been passed as a prevailing wage job. There is no cost increase at all. And I think it's, it's, you know, it's wrong to be quoting anti-labor institutions, which, which I believe the manager has, we spoke yesterday.
Wait a minute, Mr. Mayor, there's no quoting. I am quoting the consultant, okay? I am quoting both, all of our consultants. I did mention to you, there are other studies-
Yeah.
-that support that same position, although in much higher numbers. And I asked you if you had anything that supported that there's no added cost, and you didn't.
We have, we have several things, including one from Cornell University. We didn't bring it, we didn't bring it-
Well, you didn't bring, but we can, we can talk.
We can get to that later.
But the, the report is necessary because the court, the, the MSBA, this, the, the project is the project, just so the council is aware. The numbers are the numbers, the scope, we have all approved that. And, and I will, again, bring our consultants, put it in writing, have, have a meeting so you can understand why they are saying these are your alternatives. This isn't me, I'm not an expert in construction. This is why we hired consultants. And these consultants were hired long before I came on the scene. So we, we're happy to get more information on this really very important issue. And, and we talked about local labor and a whole lot of other issues, Chris.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, you know, the, the project labor agreement is going to have real teeth to the issues that the council has brought up. Something, it's going to be a living document that has real teeth. We're going to have compliance meetings, okay? Where if, guess what? If the electricians, if the painters, if the plumbers aren't up to speed with their numbers, when I say numbers, I mean Lowell residents, they're going to call someone like me or Ray or Tom, okay, or Joe Grenham, or some, some of the guys that we all know and say, hey, you need to get your numbers up. And guess what happens? Very next day, those numbers go up. Now, I, I go, I attend the UMass Building Authority compliance meeting, okay? Decam operated, UMass Building Authority operated, okay? They have all this language that we're talking about, okay? All this language exists in their documents. There's no teeth to it. We sit with a wonderful woman by the name of Maggie Druenard, works for the Building Authority. Every other month, myself and Ray and Tim, all of us, we go there and we listen to a rant and rave about who's not keeping up with their numbers? Who doesn't have their women? Who doesn't have their, their people of color? Who doesn't have their veterans? Each and every time, and this will be something I bring to the next meeting with you, Madam Manager, each and every time, the non-union contractor comes up short. And you know what? There's nothing in there punitive. It's, this language already exists. You guys, this council has the ability to, to change that and to, and to be part of this project, you know, moving forward and have your, your thumbprints on it with a project labor agreement crafted together, crafted really by you, you know? So I just want to be clear on that. These, this language exists, but there's no teeth to it. A project labor agreement puts teeth to it. The, the prevailing wage is, is what's supposed to be paid on this job? The union wage is the prevailing wage. There is no cost increase. Those numbers do not exist.
I have Counsel Elliott and Counsel Conway. You want to say, but please let-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Well, that was, that was really my issue. This is, it's prevailing wage, we're required to be prevailing wage. And if prevailing wage is the union wage, then all the issues that we're talking about, we want to ensure minority representation, we want apprenticeship, veterans agree. I'm not, I'm, I'm a black or white person. I don't like, I don't like gray because I think gray leaves way too much opportunity for mistakes. We can't make mistakes on this project. And, you know, it's frustrating and, and this is why I think we need an agreement. You know, how often do we see New Hampshire companies coming down, you know, taking good jobs away from local, you know, from, from local businesses, from local trades? It's got to stop. So to do that, put, you know, policies, we had a policy in place. I don't think policy works. So I think it has to be in black and white. We're paying, paying prevailing wage, we want apprenticeship programs, we want to ensure women and veterans are represented. And the way to do that is to put together an agreement. So I don't know what the gray area is, but I think we need to move forward on it.
Mr. Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think there's been a lot of great points made here tonight, but also it brings up some confusion too. I, I agree with Counsel Elliott when you're talking about prevailing wage. I, I don't quite understand it because if the prevailing wage is going to be the same, whether it's union or non-union, I don't understand where the cost of increase is. And that's why I, you know, I take a, a look at somebody like Chris and, and other officials from the union with their confusion too. And the, if we go back a few minutes ago, when Counsel Malinazzo made a, a suggestion that, you know, there's one thing about sitting down with the experts, and I understand that. I think that's extremely important. But these people back here are the experts too. So I would like to see perhaps the debate going on between the two experts to find out who's right and who's wrong. Because it sounds like both sides of the fence have the right answers. And that's why it's very difficult for us to sit here and make the, and make this decision because, and, and I think it was Counsel Malinazzo said, or Senator Kennedy said, the fact that everyone here wants as many union people working. It's as simple as that. And I don't mean 20% or 30%, but as high as possible. I think that, I, I think it's crazy not to because they do have the skills, they have the expertise and the understanding. And there is, it certainly is, as far as I'm concerned, a checks and balance. But if, on the other side of the fence, if you're talking about your experts, and I'll be honest with you, I don't, I, let me, let's, let me just finish. I don't always, just because someone hangs a, a sign saying I'm an expert, that doesn't necessarily mean that they're right too. So I really, I think the whole idea of, I will personally, because it's such an incredible decision, we don't want to, we don't want to complicate this and delay it by six months or a year, whatever it may be. I think everybody here agrees with that. But if we take those experts on, on our side or your side and these experts and put them, and put them at the table so there can be a solid and a, an exchange of ideas and debate to see if there is some kind of a middle ground here. But that's, you know, again, that's my opinion on it. I don't know if that makes much sense or not, but I think that's what I would like to see.
Counsel Cirillo.
Hi, yes, thank you. I have been in construction for over 20 years. And I work for a 100% union company in Boston, already outside of Boston. So, so I want this project to move forward with union labor. And just to clarify, these are our experts that we as a city hired, not the city manager's experts, not somebody else's experts. These are our experts. But, and I was, I, I, and actually, the company that I work for have built schools, being, being a full union company without PLAs. I'm going to be honest with you. So, so we, so I, I was in support of, of the PLA at first for Lowell High School. And I'm going to be truthful here, and I, I was in support. But there are some, some things that I really want to find out about and to be clear on. And I think that that's, that's fair. And that's, and so I am in agreement with Counsel Malinazzo with his request to, to see about getting some clarity. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, sir. Again, your name and-
Hi, my name is Jay Fraser. I'm a business agent with Local 103. I also sit on the Merrimack Valley Council. In this ass, there's been a spirited debate, but there's been some, let me reframe. I'm very passionate about this. You see these people sitting in this room? These are the best. They build the skyscrapers in Boston, they build the casinos. There's nobody better than these people right here. I heard about the courthouse, six months behind. I heard that there's 50% labor, union, 50% non-union. I want to talk about a couple of different things. I got so many things floating through my head right now. And one is Thondike Street. There was a, an electrician fell four stories toward a ventilation shaft. That kid will never be the same. The safety on an open shop job is horrific. And I know because we send our companies out there to these non-union jobs. Well, 103 ends up on a lot of one, non-union jobs. And I get calls all the time about the safety. And you should see what I see out there, it's horrific. Safety can't come second. I understand you're talking. I've seen, I, I don't know where the numbers are all coming from, but those are extremely high. Do I call you Mrs. Manager?
Madam Manager.
Miss, you know what I mean? City Manager, I apologize. But one thing, am I on CCTV right now?
Yes.
I am. Is that the camera right there? Because I would like to talk to the citizens of Lowell. Because you voted this council in to make the hard decisions. You voted them in. Hold them accountable. That's what it is. This is just passing it off.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I allowed you, look, I'm allowing you to speak. The thing is, the whole thing is to have dialogue. If you're going to now pin us against each other-
No, I'm not trying to, I'm speaking the truth, you're going the wrong direction.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the question, I'd like to move the question, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. It's over. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Move the question.
Move the question. All right. Roll call.
This is a roll call and a, this is a roll call and a substitute motion made by Counsel Malinazzo, seconded by Counsel Newman. Seconded by Counsel Newman. Roll call, roll call. Counsel Leahy.
Yes. Would you read the motion again?
Read the motion again.
Counsel Malinazzo, motion to request, to refer both matters back, not matters 9.1 and 9.2, back to the city manager for further information.
And hold it. Is that going to include, Mr. Mayor?
Just two things. One thing, for the audience, once the question's been moved, we can't discuss it. We have to vote, we have to vote on the motion, that's it.
Is that to include the, the union officials, the members at that table with the experts in that motion?
Yeah. I, I, again, I defer to the manager, but I think that's a good idea.
Roll call. I'll start it over. Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
No.
Counsel Malinazzo.
Yes.
Counsel Newman.
Yes.
Mayor Samaris.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
No.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Seven years.
What was the point of this? What was the point of this? You bring us in here, we get to talk, and then you say, well, it didn't matter what you were going to say anyway.
I actually live here. I live here.
So my vote doesn't count?
So my work's going to keep going to Boston, all my money's going to keep going to Boston.
We paid you paychecks. Tax pay.
The tax pay.
Mr. Mayor, break down again, man.
Hold on, hey, hold on, hold on. Can I ask, can I say one thing, Mr. Mayor? Please.
The councilors, if I can ask the brothers, everyone's frustrated. The councilor's motion.
It's the mayor's change.
The councilor's motion was to grant the manager the right to do a feasibility study.
No.
No, no. Not at all.
I'm saying the council. Read it, ma'am. I'm trying to clarify something. Listen, let me talk, all right? The councilor's motion, I understand, the councilor's motion was to grant the right to the manager to conduct a feasibility study. The original motion.
My motion.
Okay? And now there's something else going on to grant the manager to do what?
The city man, first of all, Counsel Milonazzo, state what your issue is.
It was to refer both motions back to the city manager, to meet with the experts, and to bring the union in to meet with the experts, to get us more information. Because we got a summary put on our desk tonight that's talking about it's going to cost $40 million more on the Lowell taxpayer.
I understand.
So we're asking for information.
Stop it.
Asking for information. Let them allow discussion. You can yell all you want.
Listen.
But you have somebody representing you discussing.
Let me talk, guys.
Open it up. Allow him to speak.
So I just don't see the difference. Is the manager going to conduct a feasibility study?
Excuse me, sir. Here's the thing. The manager is responsible for this entire project. You know that. She's responsible for running the city. We're the political leaders.
Right.
We try to make the decisions to support.
I understand that. I'm just looking for some clarity on what's going to happen with this.
What we've asked her to do is to meet with you people.
Yes.
With the union.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, as I understood the substitute motion, it was to refer both motions to me to get more information in a report, to work with our consultants to get a more in-depth report, which I think I started out tonight saying I am happy to do. I met with them preliminarily, and I gave some facts, but we need much more in-depth to answer a lot of the questions for the council that are here, and in addition to meet with you folks. That's what the motion was. Both motions were referred, and to come back with reports and recommendations.
And we want that information to be able to work with you.
And how long, if you don't mind me asking, what's the timeframe on this?
Very sure, a week to two weeks, several weeks.
Because it just seems to me, and again, with all due respect, it seems to me that we're, as opposed to, a feasibility study, which was our request, would do exactly what the manager is talking about. What the body.
We will come back with a report for the council and for the people.
And a cost.
And so there'll be pretty much a feasibility study on the feasibility study?
Okay. You know what, Mr. Mayor? This is, you know, I think the council has spoken, has voted.
They have.
We voted on it.
I got it.
You'll be called.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Is Skins already guaranteed?
It's over.
Can I just ask, is Skins?
Sorry, it's over. It's over. All right. I need minutes of the city council meeting, May 7th, for acceptance. Need a motion to accept, place, and file.
So move.
By Counsel Noon, seconded by Counsel Milonazzo. Then we have the auditor's business informational fiscal 18 audit financial statement, fiscal 18 management letter, fiscal 18 SCFEA. Motion to accept, place, and file, and refer to the finance subcommittee. Need a motion by Counsel Milonazzo, seconded by Counsel Cirillo. We then now go to communication with the city manager, motion response. Buckback, Crosswalk, Counsel Mercia.
No, I can't even think straight.
Any information? Okay. Next, we have neighborhood impact team, Counsel Cirillo.
Hi, yes, thank you. I was really happy to see that the neighborhoods were going to have a contingent out at the neighborhoods, walking the streets to look at issues. And it was a very short, concise, and good report. Thank you.
Next, we have the changing station, information reports, charging station update. Madam Manager.
Yes, just quickly in the report, we currently have five electric vehicle charging stations. This is adding 16, so we will have a total of 21. This is in large part the result of a grant that we got very short notice of from National Grid, that there, we were getting reimbursed, but we had to accomplish it by the end of this month. And so I want to credit everyone who sprang into action to get this done in really short order, Toby Marks and others. And I, and so these, we expect all of the installations to be completed by the end of this month. And as I said, it's on grant money that, I think, as the grant came across my desk, it was, there was grant money available, but it had to be utilized and expended within a few weeks. And so the application was done almost immediately. We heard back within days that we were getting the grant money to install 16 new charging stations around the city. And those are listed from City Hall area, as well as all of the garages.
Counsel Cirillo.
Hi, yes, thank you. I was very, very excited to see the report of the charging stations being added. And I think that this is the city moving forward in a greener and healthier and more progressive way. So thank you very much.
Next, we have FY 18 audit response. Madam Manager.
Yes, the audit response is in the packet. I'll turn this over to the CFO, Mr. Baldwin. I don't know what to explain, or I don't know if the council has questions first.
I move that the response be referred to the finance subcommittee, along with the, you know, the other report, so.
I'll second.
I don't have any questions, but I do have a response myself. Looking through the Powers and Sullivan's report and audit, they offer a management letter, and they respond to many items, and they refer to a number of processes such as internal controls, in the school department, as material weakness. A material weakness is a deficiency. And when they go further, they talk about the school grant management. And in the, one of the pages under city management letter on page eight, they talk about the Lowell Public Schools received a federal education grant for $508,000 in 2016, and they had to return it because they didn't use it. And in 2017, they returned $807,000 in federal funds to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. I am so upset when I see something like this, that someone in the school department took the time and energy and did their job, and they got these two specific grants, $508,000 in 2016, $807,000 in 2017. And in 2018, they got a much lesser grant. Oh, isn't that amazing? It's much lesser, to the tune of $118,000, which had to be returned. Add that all up and say, "Well, that was a lot of money that we did not use." So if they come before this city council, I hope that you separate what we owe on the city side as to what they owe on the school side, because I'm not voting to pay a dime on what they own when they can't spend this money. And I will tell you that we have a planning department here, and I'm sure that I will never, no matter who's in charge, it's Diane Trad now, but I go back many years, we've never, ever had to do that. And what is so remarkable about Lowell, which this puts a little shame into me, is the state is happy to give us money, the federal government is too, because we are a city that goes after a grant and we spend it. But when you look at this on the school side, I'm disgusted. This is a shame. I'm sorry I found it.
Those are issues I've had with the budgets.
I'm disgusted. Thank you.
It's being resolved. It's been.
Well, being resolved and sending money back, that kills me.
But, I wasn't there. There now. Audit response, anything else? Madam Manager? I need a motion to adopt, accept, place, and file, by Counsel Milonazzo, seconded by Counsel Cirillo. Next, we have communications, city manager requests out-of-state travel. Two members Lowell Police Department, one member of Health and Human Services, need a motion to adopt. Counsel Cirillo, seconded by Counsel Noon. Roll call.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Milonazzo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Eight yeas.
Okay. Next, votes from the city manager. Vote apply, accept, expend Mass DEP grant of $7,500. Waive the full reading, second reading by title. Authorize the city manager to apply for, accept, and expend funds in the form of a grant from the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, Mass DEP, under the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program for use in the City of Lowell Recycling Program administered through the Department of Public Works. I need a motion to adopt, by Counsel Conway, seconded by Counsel Cirillo. Roll call.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Milonazzo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Eight yeas.
Next, vote transfer $50,000 to cover spring workload to maintain building and street fleet operation. Waive the full reading, second reading by title. Audit transfer $50,000 to cover spring workload to maintain building and street fleet operations. Need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Counsel Cirillo, seconded by Counsel Noon. Roll call.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Milonazzo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Eight yeas.
Next, vote transfer $50,000 to properly fund Gazem Motor Oil account for fiscal 19, and to purchase necessary supplies to park staff. Waive the full reading, second reading by title. Audit transfer $50,000 to properly fund Gazem Motor Oil account for fiscal 19, to purchase necessary supplies for park staff. Need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Counsel Cirillo, seconded by Counsel Noon. Roll call.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Milonazzo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
That's nine yeas.
Vote to transfer $10,000 to cover various financial obligations and developmental services. Waive the full reading, second reading by title. Audit transfer $10,000 to increase funding for development service over time. Motion to adopt, by Counsel Conway, seconded by Counsel Cirillo. Roll call.
Counsel Leahy. Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Milonazzo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Ruled subcommittee, you've made your report, Counsel Elliott.
It's all set.
You all set on that?
Yeah, we already made our report.
I made mine. Petitions miscellaneous. Luenham, a zone, request for removal of handicap parking sign at 400 Gorham Street at the corner of 3 Auburn Street. Motion to refer to Law Department for reporting recommendations.
So move.
Seconded by Counsel Noon, seconded by Counsel Cirillo. National Grid requires installation of South Pole at 500 Wentworth Avenue. A motion to refer to a public hearing on May 28, 2019, at 7:00 PM, by Counsel Noon, seconded by Counsel Cirillo. Next, National Grid installation poles on Woburn Street at intersection of Eastern Street. Motion to refer to a public hearing on May 28, 2019, at 7:00 PM.
So move.
Seconded.
Noon, seconded by Counsel Cirillo. Finally, National Grid requests installation of 2- to 3-inch underground electric conduit at 27 West 3rd Street. Motion to refer to a public hearing on May 28, 2019, at 7:00 PM.
So move.
Seconded.
Noon, seconded by Counsel Cirillo. Okay. We're into motions. Motion by Counsel Milonazzo. Request city manager prepare a report on the status of the bridge reconstruction project on New Hall Street, which spans the River Meadow Brook.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Noon.
Thank you. The motion speaks for itself, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
If I could, throw you to the manager while we're on the subject of bridges. The bridge on Central Street downtown. What's going on there, and what is going to be the duration of that project?
That's part of the Tiger Grant Bridge repair and reconstruction. That's a very big project. It's going to be, the duration is, I believe, 24 months.
Okay.
And it will have, it will have reduced lanes of passage. It will be open the whole time to go both directions, but it is a reduced lane as they go through the project. But it's two years.
Okay. And it has to be reduced lane all the time?
Yes. If, the only other option is to close the street, and it could be accomplished in perhaps less time, but the decision was, that's much more disruptive to close Central for a year or, you know, 16 months versus having passage one way. But yes, it is, my understanding, speaking to the engineer, it will shift, it will change, but there will be reduced lane opening for the whole duration of the project.
Okay. Did we do work on that project, on that bridge, a short time ago?
I'm not certain. I think, I'm not certain if it was recent, but this is the Tiger project.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Years ago it was. I'd say well over a decade. Yeah. We can find out what work was done, but it's, you know, it's in deficient condition, and that's why it was included.
If the work was done, then was not done as part of the Tiger grant?
No.
Yeah.
This is the beginning of the Tiger for that bridge.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Next, by Counsel Cirillo, request city manager have the proper department install 15-minute parking sign at 262 Middle 6th Street. Need a second, by Counsel Noon. Counsel Cirillo. Oh, I'm sorry, Regent Speaker. David Cordero.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity. It's my first time speaking here, so I'm a little nervous.
I'm a small business owner. First of all, thanks to Ms. Cirillo. We actually met at the Jambra meeting for the first time. I opened a business at 262 Middle Sixth Street, and we're very excited about it. It's almost a year now in July. But one of the things that we're facing is that the limited parking space. Now, obviously, we understand that being in a main street, you know, there's obviously parking meters and so on. But as part of our industry, as an apparel business, well, it's not like a, you know, like a food store. You're always going to have walking people or a doctor's place where you're always going to have food traffic. It's very limited as an apparel store, and what I'm going with this is that we already had customers telling us, "Hey, you know, we went to your place, but we couldn't find a parking spot, so we left." And as a small business owner, there's a bit of an impact. Regardless of that, we still got to abide by the law and pay the meters and so on. So what I came here to talk about today, the opportunity of getting at least a 15-minute parking space in front of our store to allow our consumers to at least have the opportunity to go in and do what they have to do, and, you know, then leave. I mean, if that's a possibility, I would greatly appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So he spoke eloquently with regards to my motion. Thank you.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I ask, what type of business do you have there?
We have an apparel store. It's called Denim's Grid Store.
Oh, it's apparel. Oh. Woman's fashion. Okay, there you go. Motion to approve.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I threw you to the manager. Madam Manager, I do think, you know, the businesses that we have downtown, by and large, are boutique-type businesses, and they struggle because they, well, partly because they don't work together, which is what they should be doing, but instead, they're kind of separate. But I think, I've heard this complaint about parking from several businesses downtown. So I think anything that we can do to help with 15-minute parking, even if it's on a trial basis for a few months, just to see how that works. To me, one or two meters, to give up one or two meters or to have them be 15-minute parking, I can't imagine that the lost revenue from having it be a regular meter would be all that great. So anything that we can do to help this business out, I would be strongly supportive. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have, by Council Cirillo, request city manager have the property department replace the no-left-turn sign for Elm Street in front of the Extra Mart gas station on Gorham Street.
Second.
By Council Noon, Council Cirillo.
Hi, yes. This motion comes from a meeting, and with a woman had mentioned that when the Extra Mart gas station was installed, that also a no-left-turn sign was installed for no-left-turn onto Elm Street. And the no-left-turn sign was taken down or hit down, and so it's missing. So the request is just to replace the no-left-turn sign, and that's it.
Okay. All right. Next, by Council Cirillo, request city manager have the property department work with the theater and arts community to have Lowell letter reading event.
Second.
Seconded by Council Noon, Council Cirillo.
Hi, yes, thank you. Okay, so this motion came about because of Benedict Cumberbatch. For anyone who doesn't know him, he played Sherlock in the BBC. Well, anyway. So he has this wonderful, he has this wonderful program in London, and now it's in LA, and it's in New York, and it's called Letters Live. And it's a celebration of literary correspondence. And in New York's events, they've had James Earl Jones read letters on stage. And there are letters from, for example, a letter that Gandhi wrote to Hitler 32 years after portraying the Indian activist. A letter written by Queen Victoria to her eldest daughter being read. And so I read that. A huge part of why people go to Letters Live is an ineffable longing for a return to more nuanced, intelligent communication. There are always momentous letters. Buzz Aldrin reflecting on his experience on the moon. Virginia Woolf's final letter to her husband before her suicide. And there are very ordinary lives on brilliant display, like the irate Australian woman who wrote to her neighbor about his playing Daft Punk at 5:00 AM. So this is just, I thought that maybe the City of Lowell could do something like this and have like a Lowell Live Letters and do a production. Because we, I'm sure Jack Kerouac wrote some really fantastic letters in his lifetime. And Betty Davis, she was born here in Lowell, I'm sure she wrote some really fantastic letters, along with just ordinary people who've written letters. I've seen some really fantastic writers just here in this room. So, yeah, I think it would be a great opportunity for the city to have something that's a little different. Thank you.
Next, by Council Noon, request mayor present citation to 2019 Teaching Professional of the Year at selected council meeting.
Seconded.
Seconded by Council Cirillo, Council Noon.
Motion speaks for itself, Mr. Mayor.
Next, by Council Leahy, require city manager provide an update regarding program for police details to be filled by Lowell Police Department.
Second.
Seconded by Council Noon.
Motion speaks for itself. If we could just hear back, would you think you might have a timeline for that?
Well, it's in the legislature, but we'll check in and see where it is. It was a home rule petition.
So it's down in Boston, you mean?
Yeah, but we'll see where it is.
Okay.
Maybe we'll ask someone we know.
All right. We were to have executive session. That has been canceled for tonight. Announcements. Are there any announcements? Announcements? Motion to adjourn? I'm sorry.
Are we going into executive session? It was what?
Canceled.
Canceled.
Madam Manager.
The city engineer did have a notice that, effective, I believe, on Monday, there is a detour that will be in place on Broadway over the Pawtucket Canal. We'll get more details. We'll post it on the website, but we just want to make the public aware. If they travel inbound, not outbound, but inbound on Broadway, there will be a detour, and we'll get the information out to the public.
All right. Motion adjourned by Council Leahy, seconded by Council Millinazzo. Thank you.